Do this quietly. Good evening, everybody. I'd like to call the City of Lake Forest Park, City Council Regular Meeting for Thursday, December 12th, 2024 to order. With that, I've asked Councilman Riddle to lead us in the Pledge of Allegiance. Please stand, everyone.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, everyone. Please be seated. Uh, I would entertain a motion for adoption of the agenda.
I'm moved. So moved.
This is Seattle nights. This is. It's been moved and seconded. I'm not sure which direction it happened. Is there any further discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
Aye.
Anyways, the ayes have it. Thank you, Council, very much. And with that, we're moving on to public comments. Chief. Thank you, sir. The council will not be accepting online public comments. You. Uh, this portion of the agenda is set aside for the public to address the the council on agenda items or any other topic the council might have purview or control over. However, the mayor or the council may not respond to comments from the public. If the comments are of a nature that the council does not have influence or control over, then the mayor may request uh, the speaker to suspend their comments. The council may direct staff to follow up on items brought up by the public. Comments are limited to a three-minute time limit. Thank you very much, everyone. Um, we have no one signed up tonight for uh, public comment in chambers. Is there anyone how in-house that would like to make public comment at this time that who has not signed up? Okay, with that, I think, uh, oh, that's for the public here. Excuse me. We have some comments that were sent in for the public hearing, but with that, we'll close public comments. Um. Gosh, I'm saying um a lot tonight. Must be my voice failing too. With that, we're going to open a public hearing on Resolution twenty-four nineteen ninety-two concerning shoreline fire department, North Shore Fire Department Proposition One to create a regional fire authority. The ballot title is Shoreline Fire Department, North Shore Fire Department Proposition One. The shoreline and North Shore Fire Departments have adopted a joint resolution approving the shoreline regional file fire authority plan. Creating a regional fire authority. This proposition would approve the plan and create the shoreline fire department RFA effective May one, two thousand and twenty-five to provide fire protection, emergency medical services. The RFA's funding is based on a property tax of point uh, seven zero per thousand of cess value and a fire benefit charge. The funding would replace the current property tax levities and fire benefit charges collected by the shoreline and North Shore Fire Districts. Uh, and with, let's see, with that, I guess we're going to start with presentation from Chief Cowan. Welcome, Chief. Nice to see you again.
It's good to see you all again, too. And thanks again for allowing me the time to come and talk to you about this important ballot measure. Uh, do we have my presentation?
And just for everyone's verification, I opened the public hearing. We were supposed to do the presentation in advance of that. I apologize. We'll reopen the public hearing. The con- these comments are outside of the public hearing. So thank you, Chief Cowan.
Okay. Okay, great. Um. I'd like to start with slide twelve. This working?
Big buzz.
Uh, okay. There it goes. Okay, so um, I I'm, I know we have a short timeframe tonight, and I was here uh, just recently talking to you about the the benefits of the uh, your local agreement that we have, the contract that we have uh, right now uh, with the North Shore Fire Department. Um, so I wanted to focus a little bit on the RFA side and and just to revisit that and then answering, you know, questions that you may have. Um, for me, I I shared with you my story as to why I joined the fire service and and you know, my passion for public service. I mean, I am here to serve. I'm here to make sure that our firefighters are all properly equipped and supported with a healthy organization to provide the highest level of services that we can. And at the same time, as a fire chief, I have a responsibility to make sure that our tax dollars are going in the most efficient way possible and uh, to be able to improve those level service, maintain those level service and or, you know, be able to provide savings to the taxpayers when it's possible. So I'd like to focus a little bit about tonight uh, or tonight about the RFA and some of the benefits there. Um, and and start off by saying that the RFA is a way to continue with the uh, advantages and efficiencies that we received out of the ILA. And the analogy that I've used is always, you know, you're dating and then you're engaged and then and then you're married. Well, we're in that engaged, you know, phase right now where we're in this ILA, which is working very well. Uh, but at the same time, it's, I believe it is, it was the first step to making this a permanent or a more permanent relationship and and a marriage, if you will. So one of the things that I just want to revisit on is that we are going to be able to save money. We've already gotten a lot of the operational efficiencies. There's still some more there that we can get. But this, this really, this focuses on long-term administrative and fiscal efficiencies. And we will be able to save nearly two hundred thousand dollars right off the bat with just the budgets. Uh, we will also be able to save millions of dollars uh, off the carryover and being efficient there. Both the North Shore and Shoreline Fire Departments have to carry over money. I'm sure you're familiar with January one to April one and being able to fund, you know, uh, operations until you receive the first half taxes. Well, that's the same situation that the fire department um, is is in. And so in case, in this case, both the North Shore and the Shoreline Fire Departments are having that carryover. There's, there's at least three million dollars there. And I'm not talking about reserves and and tonight. Uh, that is another study that can be done, and there's probably some more uh, savings there and efficiencies. But I'm really just talking about the upfront, the the carryover and the savings off of the budgets. So um, as we get together, we would be able to reduce those liabilities and those reserves I was just talking about. There, there's probably some more efficiencies there. Um, that that would take some board action and and uh, adjustment to that risk. Um, it does give us the long-term sustainability that that I've been talking about. It gives us better resource sharing with our personnel and our apparatus and equipment, being able to um, move those apparatus and and people where they need to be. Um, and for one example is, you know, we have an aid one fifty-seven uh, right here at Station Fifty-Seven that could float around a little bit better. We've talked about moving a reserve ladder truck down to Kenmore to Station Fifty-One. Um, and as we cement that relationship, I've mentioned our WSRB, the Washington State Rating Bureau, rating of two, top two percent in the, in Washington State. A wa- a RFA will help us maintain that that rating and to be able to use the economies of scale to leverage that uh, for not only the WSRB rating, but also for grants and other things that uh, that we wouldn't necessarily be as strong in in applying for. There it goes. Okay. Um, so one of the other things that administratively, uh, I would not have to be stretched so thin in working with different boards, different resolutions, different budgets, different funds. Uh, our administrative staff would have more efficiencies in maintaining those those uh, those different funds and so forth. Right now, we have some duplication that's going on. I'm, I've estimated, and it's not in these these financial estimates, but we're probably close to a full FTE, a full-time employee worth of inefficiency right now through the ILA. That will, you know, that's could be more savings, you know, down the road or in not having to hire people or improving, you know, what we can do operationally administratively with the current staff. And then again, our support services. Um. Right now, we uh, are managing the different projects. My, my deputy chief of support services in the different projects, pulling from different funds. Again, we could get different economies of scale. There'd be more efficiency in being able to manage those funds more properly as we, these projects come up. Uh, things that both apparatus-wise and and with our facilities. Okay, there it goes. Sorry, there's a little bit of a delay. Um, and then the governance, that's been a a topic of conversation quite a bit. Uh, the North Shore Fire Department currently has a Board of Five Commissioners and a and a part-time Board Secretary. They make sure that I am managing the ILA correctly and holding me accountable. They have taxing authority and and ownership of some of the appar- the apparatus and 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 the stations themselves. But in a RFA, they would have more strategic input, and that was super important to everybody that we talked to, both with our fire commissioners and the citizens and residents that we've talked to that we wanted to have geographic, local geographical perspective and input onto the strategic level, you know, for the RFA. So we designed the RFA plan to have equal representation from the North Shore Fire District and the Shoreline Fire District. And North Shore obviously representing Lake Forest Park and Kenmore. And Shoreline each would populate the RFA board with five each, five electeds each uh, initially. Uh, and over time, where I'm hoping, I'm hoping that would be a little bit less over time to drop from ten to maybe towards eight, seven, six, something that's a little bit more manageable, but it was very important to all of us to make sure that there was good representation initially. Uh, and then over time, if there was a majority, um, uh, board vote to do something different. Um, and and as we get more comfortable, then we could do, you know, uh, more efficiencies and and more things, you know, with our uh, it being more uh, still maintain the representation, but get more efficient with less, less people, and that would save us some money as well. Um. It's not. So, and I was talking about the the marriage and that analogy. Uh, again, I just want to reemphasize that we have an ILA right now. It's, it's working well, but there again, there's administrative and financial efficiencies that we cannot gain without doing the RFA and entering into a long-term uh, relationship. Uh, I want to finish with one, and I'll skip to one of the uh, final slides where I talk about, and I can show you the financial impacts that I didn't have last time. It's not. What am I supposed to be aiming this? Oh, there we go. It's not going the right direction. What's that? Uh, it's, I think it's seventeen. It's the, it's the first one that has it. It's for, oh, you're doing it. Okay. Thank you. Sorry. Oh, okay. Next one. There you go. All right. Thank you. Um, so I wanted to show you this slide because this is our our estimate of from an apples-to-apples comparison. Um, if you look in the middle of that slide there, um, in that column under separated two thousand and twenty-five, we're estimating that the Shoreline Fire Department will be at an equivalent levy rate of a dollar sixteen-six. And when I say equivalent levy rate, I'm talking about the fire levy and the fire benefit charge in an equivalent manner. Uh, and the the North Shore Fire Department will be at a dollar twelve-five. But if you move to the right, you'll see that if we were to come together in two thousand and twenty-five, we would could be at a dollar seven-seven. This will equate to a hundred, all of our single-family residences will see a decrease in their overall revenues that they have to contribute. And ninety-eight percent of all the property owners will see a decrease. There will be some, the commercial uh, owners and some multifamilies that may see an increase. Uh, but as we get that number further down, it'll be less and less, but it's very substantial what we can do with the financial savings and equate that to not only a decreased levy rate for uh, two thousand and twenty-six, but you know, in the future, as we reinvest those savings to keep that levy rate down and or levels of service improvements, too. I want to mention that this is a comparison. This is not in two thousand and twenty-five. All, everything's set for two thousand and twenty-five. This would be as we looked to two thousand and twenty-six and actually, you know, are able to budget for the um, the, an actual RFA, so. I tried to go through that really quickly because I didn't, I know that I I spoke and and I took a lot of your time, uh, the last time I was here, so. But I'd really like to know if you have any questions or if there's anything that you'd like to revisit. I have some other slides I could show you, but I'd rather know what what questions that you may have.
Thank you very much, Chief Cowan. Colleagues, questions for Chief? As for Riddle.
Yeah, thank you, Chief, for the very quick presentation. I appreciate it. Um, I have three kind of questions that you may not be able to answer right now, but as the board gets combined, it's starting out as an even number. Who would be a tie-breaking vote for that situation until the board composition changes?
For me, I don't necessarily need to have an odd number, which may sound odd. Um, but I don't need to have an odd number necessarily because I I'll take my board of five like for right now. If I have a three-two vote, that might be a of a, an approval, a yes vote. I don't look at that as a yes or as as I've done my job. Why do I have two, two votes that are saying no? Have I not done my job in in educating or 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 do we have a bad plan? So I don't look at 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 a three-two vote necessarily as a, as a good thing, as a yes. I really look at, you know, and most of my votes are five-oh. Um, and so even with a board of ten, even if we ended up at a, at a six-four or a five-five even, the, I'm, I'm not looking at those as really as wins. Uh, I did ask uh, our attorney when we were developing this plan, I said, hey, so this is an even number. And he goes, I've done this a lot. I've done with with other RFAs. It's never been a problem, et cetera, and that gave me some, some confidence that it's not such a bad idea. So, and I I am expecting that that we will over time get through some attrition. Uh, we have a couple of of potential vacancies coming up even.
Colleagues, other questions for Chief Cowan?
I have more if no one else is going.
Run around the horn. Uh, customer, we're good. Do you have any questions?
Hmm. Um, I would still like the answer of what Councilmember Riddle said is, would there be a tie-breaking vote and who would do it?
Oh.
Uh, that would fall back to the, I believe it's to the district secretary that would uh, do a tie vote. Um, but I, 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 for me, if I'm at that point, I would, I would ask the the board to remove it and to reconsider something in the future. I I would not look at that as as an approval.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you.
Sorry that I didn't answer that fully.
Councilman Riddle?
Um, in the ILA, North Shore Fire District still maintain ownership of the physical buildings here, or did that already transfer to Shoreline?
Uh, no, in the ILA, uh, the North Shore Fire District still owns the buildings and uh, some of the apparatus and they've, you know, we're even in the the process of making a, a purchase right now. So there is ownership under the ILA. In the RFA, everything would be thrown together. Uh, but I I do want to mention that uh, there is a capital bond that the North Shore Fire District uh, uh, put into place, and it's nearly sunsetting uh, for the Station Fifty-One uh, project in Kenmore. Shoreline also has one as well, and those would remain with the uh, vote or with the tax uh, or the property owners and and would be taxed uh, by them until it sunsets, and they're both going to sunset over the next couple of years. Uh, we felt that it was more appropriate to make sure that the people that put those into place, that that debt into place should be the ones that that cover that until it's um, completed.
Okay. And then the way this is structured, since Shoreline has a greater opportunity for population growth and needs than Lake Forest Park, could we ever get out of alignment as far as common levy rate being higher essentially for Lake Forest Park to the service level that we're getting simply because we're not going to be growing as much as Shoreline? Is that a concern for you?
It's not a concern because we're, this would be us all coming together and and being collaborative with it. I actually look at this as as a positive. Uh, because each of our different communities grow and and at different rates and so forth, and and in, from year to year, you might see, you know, an increase that's higher in one area than the other, but this would uh, kind of homogenize all of that. So the growth that occurs in, say, Shoreline or Kenmore or even Lake Forest Park, you know, at times would offset and it would smooth out some of the uh, cyclical, you know, uh, ups and downs, the increases and decreases in in overall AV and potential revenues. So I look at this as a strength, uh, and uh, Shoreline is is growing faster than Lake Forest Park. Kenmore's growing a- as well, and probably will see some, some increased growth as they go through some rezoning and so forth, but um, again, I look at this as as us all being together. And I don't see this as an, as an issue.
Okay. And I don't want to take it very much time. So my last question is, is there a name change?
Is there a name change?
A name change when we come together, the three cities.
Uh, there was some discussion when we did the ILA uh, with North Shore about what we were going to become. Uh, but because it's an ILA and it's potentially temporary, um, we decided that that was not the right time to rebrand. Uh, and that, and frankly, it seemed like most, I'm not going to say all, it seemed like everybody or close to everybody in North Shore was happy to become Shoreline Fire uh, Department employees. So it wasn't necessary uh, from a internal uh, standpoint to change the name, and because of the ILA, it was not desirable at that time. As we look to the RFA, uh, and a more permanent uh, you know, relationship, I think that it's, there is an opportunity to potentially rebrand. Uh, and or if there's other entities that that are interested in coming on to the RFA, that would certainly be an opportunity to rebrand. It, maybe everybody's happy being Shoreline Fire, but at the same time, I think the name should be reflective or or at least um, be a a consensus-driven uh, comfortability with what the name is because that's supposed to reflect our communities. So I'm not, I for now, it won't change under the RFA, but I think that that's something that will be revisited in the near future.
Thank you, Chief.
Thank you, Chief. Colleagues, any other questions for Chief Cowan? Okay, thank you very much.
I jumped around there a lot, so I I apologize. You have the, the full presentation for you uh, there. So if you ever have any questions, please feel free to email me or call me or or invite me back, and I can take up more of your time.
Be back.
So, all right, thank you.
Thank you so much, Chief. Appreciate it. Uh, okay, with that, we're, now we will actually open the public hearing. My apologies earlier. Um, or comments on uh, on Resolution twenty-four nineteen ninety-two concerning Shoreline. Our, thank you, Chief. Fire Department, North Shore Fire Department Proposition One to create a regional fire authority. Yes, uh, and first, we're going to start, let's see. Make sure I go through who wants to speak. Uh, Eric Admin. Eric, please, welcome.
Thank you. Um, thank you, council members, for your service and for the opportunity to comment. Uh, my name's Eric Admin. I'm here as a current North Shore Fire Commissioner, and I would like to speak in favor of the proposed regional fire authority. Um, just to kind of recap where we are right now, we've been under this contract for a couple of years, and it's had a number of benefits. Um, these have included uh, financial and operational efficiencies, um, better services that we've been able to offer. We've got an aid car in Lake Forest Park. We've got EMS transport by our local firefighters where we used to always almost exclusively rely on private ambulance. Um, we have a better ability to um, put out specialty teams such as a rescue, ladder operations, water rescue, so more ability to do those things. Um, we've eliminated some vulnerabilities that we were really not aware of, but we discovered um, as Shoreline took over management of our operations. Um, we had some vulnerabilities in our IT infrastructure. We had some vulnerabilities in um, our stations, and there's just there uh, some things that need to be replaced, such as uh, a generator, which is um, on the verge of failure. So there's been some other things that were discovered that were really not looked at previously, so we've had those. And uh, overall, I think the RFA is going to be essentially cost-neutral for Lake Forest Park, um, but with some, with with some additional savings. Um, it's essentially the same financial model as a fire district. It's just a bigger fire district. And in fact, Shoreline has actually been creative in some of the uh, revenue generation measures that they've had, which uh, I think that North Shore is benefiting from because we've been able to implement some of those revenue generating measures as well. The biggest benefit of the regional fire authority would be to secure these advantages for the long term. Um, a contract is a limited-term contract. And uh, some might argue that you know, it's good to maintain that leverage, but that leverage is a little bit of vulnerability and a little bit of maybe this is something that might not last. And I think that the the biggest benefit of this is that it would secure those advantages for the long term. So, thank you.
Thank you very much, Mr. Admin. Last time we saw him, uh, Councilmember Fer Tony and I were talking with him over a bunch of cocaine. I mean, the fish, not the beer. So. Uh, Mr. Marin, you're next up, sir. Welcome.
Evening. Before I start, I was wondering if I could get an extra minute or so. This is a pretty complicated topic to do in just three minutes.
Colleagues, what's your pleasure? You're fine.
Thank you.
Yeah.
Okay, thank you.
For that'd be great. Thank you.
Uh, my name is David Marin. I'm a longtime Kenmore resident. I was a North Shore Fire Commissioner for twenty years, retired King County Sheriff's Office Captain with thirty years of experience. My father and brother were firefighters. Uh, I value our firefighters and their dedication to the community's safety. Like all of you, I believe the firefighters should have all they need to do their job well and safely. But the RFA is not about supporting the firefighters. It's about governance. Kenmore and Lake Forest Park have the best of both worlds now. We have gained the efficiency of consolidation, saving about one point four million dollars a year. Now, under the contract for fire service with Shoreline, we have retained the right to set our own level of service, tax rate, and continued ownership of our assets, our fire stations, apparatus, and reserve funds. We receive quality services. All is working well, and there's no reason to change. There is nothing the RFA can do that both Boards of Fire Commissioners cannot already do. It is important to note that the two Boards of Fire Commissioners are dominated by firefighter interests. Three of the Board members are active IEFF firefighters. Two are past Shoreline firefighters, and two are the wives of retired Shoreline Fire Chiefs. I'm not disparaging um, these individuals or their service. But I believe that there is an inherent bias that makes it difficult for them to see the issue from a civilian, citizen, and taxpayer point of view. The RFA is by the firefighters and for the firefighters. I see no improvements in this plan for the citizens of the North Shore Fire District. The chief and firefighters do not want to be encumbered by contract obligations. Chief Cowan has stated that one of the reasons for forming the RFA is so the personnel and resources can be more easily moved to where they're needed. With the contract for services, you are guaranteed to receive the services you pay for. Not so with the RFA. The Shoreline population and um, calls naturally go to the um, to meet the demand. Most likely, they'll, those uh, transferred resources will come from Lake Forest Park Station because it is by far the lowest call volume station in the area. The only reason the peak hours aid car station, aid car is stationed in Lake Forest Park is because your fire commissioners funded the unit to improve response and facilitate patient transport. That unit runs from Lake Forest Park Station because the contract requires that it come from this station. The chief told you that the governance will be by five North Shore Fire Commissioners and five Shoreline Commissioners. This is a short-term state. The RFA plan does not identify Commissioner districts, and all future commissioner positions will be elected at large. Shoreline's population is about sixty-five percent of the district. Most commissioners will come from Shoreline. The chiefs told you that the RFA is funded by a seventy-cent levy. The North Shore citizens just raised uh, the levy limit to seventy cents. Kenmore Lake Forest Park voted for that in August. What was not mentioned is that the levy authorization will rise to one dollar in two thousand and twenty-six according to the RFA plan, Section Six, Part B one. The RFA does not improve operations. It does not produce cost efficiencies, and it does not really reduce taxes. The claimed tax rate reduction is primarily due to the spending down of reserves. Uh, a one-time risky endeavor that cannot be replicated in future years. There's also a general fund um, um, anomaly that the chief just recognized a couple of months ago where in the general fund, that's the money that you use to carry you from the beginning of the year when you don't get tax revenues until you get your tax revenues. Um, that, that money was being collected hundred percent of the budget um, by Shoreline, and and the chief didn't recognize that North Shore was also carrying a a general fund reserve fund, about a third of what was required. There's no magic in the RFA to reduce the need for reserves. This is simply a board decision, one that the fire commissioners should make on their own. Tax predictions are hugely optimistic. You know that operation costs cannot increase by six percent per year, and taxes only increase by one percent. The increase in the new construction would have to be phenomenal and on a consistent basis to make that happen. The RFA is also forever. There are no realistic way back from the RFA. Our communities are democrat, uh, demographically different. The fire response needs are different, and it makes sense for each community to set their own level of service and their own tax rate. A contract for service has many advantages. The terms of the contract are enforceable. The contract negotiation process is flexible.
Mr. Marin, you need to wrap up, please.
Okay.
You're way over time.
Okay. That, I thought you, I was going to get an extra minute or two. Okay, so anyway, the contract negotiation process is flexible. It also provides incentive for them, for the people to actually perform at the level that's required. If they don't, there could be consequences of renegotiation or another contract. So I'm happy to answer any questions, and there's a lot more to this um, that I can do in just that short period of time. So, thank you.
Thank you very much for your comments. Uh, Philippa Casover. Welcome, Philippa.
Thank you. Good evening, Council. Um, my name is Philippa Casover. I am a resident of Lake Forest Park and a former member of your own body, the council, and during that time, uh, you, the council you, the council appointed me as the liaison to the North Shore Fire Department, and I spent many months attending fire commission meetings, and this was around the time that the ILA was conceived and eventually created. And I always knew then and approved of the fact that there needed to be a more permanent solution. While we here in Lake Forest Park and our neighbors in Kenmore have enjoyed wonderful service from very dedicated firefighters, it became very, very clear that a department that small could not keep up with the kinds of technology and equipment and training and specialized personnel that the modern world really requires. But a bigger department with more resources, more ability to train and to provide specialized services for very particular needs in different areas of our larger region really makes a lot more sense. So I'm so pleased that the two departments have worked so closely together and so well together under the ILA. But it's clear and it's a total common sense solution to now combine those boards, combine those budgets, do away with some of the duplication of professional services that it requires to run a board, to run a budget. And I am fully in support of the RFA. I am working with the pro committee. I'm not on the pro committee this time, but I'm working with them. And we are experiencing a lot of support around the community. We already have endorsements from the entire state delegation, our state senator and both our state representatives from many individuals in the area. We are now looking to get the support of the hospitals in the area, who of course deal with fire department personnel on a regular basis. So I'm here tonight to ask you to please support the RFA and to let our community know that this really is in our best interests as residents, and I appreciate all that you do. Thank you very much.
Thank you so much, Philippa. Is there anyone else in council chambers that would like to make a comment during the public hearing? Okay, with that, Vice Chair Furtani was going to read off a list of people who provided written comment.
Thank you, Mayor. And so speaking in favor, these are the written comments. Where Eric Ingram, who's a shore who's speaking for Shoreline Firefighters Union Local seventeen sixty and Charlie Kimball, who's an LFP resident and a firefighter himself. Nathan Herzog of LFP resident did not want the council to take a position.
Thank you, Vice Chair Furtani. With that, we'll close the public hearing. Colleagues, now this is the time to, are there any? Let's see, are there any questions from the council about things that were raised during the public hearing?
Thank you. So we heard from one of the public members who suggested that they had additional information that they would like to present to us. Is there an opportunity for us to gather up that information for our consideration?
Absolutely, it could be submitted in writing. If you would like to provide it to the clerk, Mr. Marin. Thank you, Mr. Lebo. Any other, any questions about comments that were made during the public hearing? And with that, we can, it's time for discussion and consideration, colleagues. What's your pleasure? Okay. Yeah, just in writing. Let me give you a second here. Thank you. Colleagues, Councilmember Riddle.
I I feel like we knew this was coming when we were looking at the ILA. You know, at that time, there was this conversation, do we? Where do we go? Because we couldn't exist on our own. And if we were to leave the ILA, we would still have to do something. Again, we cannot exist on our own in this current environment with the costs and the needs of a fire department. Shoreline fires work really well with us. I think we haven't heard any major grumblings. I haven't. So I personally would be in support of Proposition One and to allow the community to have their voice.
Councilmember Riddle. Thank you. Vice Chair Furtani.
And I'm speaking in favor of Proposition One myself, and I'm going to be reading a statement from Councilmember Goldman, who could not be here tonight. He's giving a final. So and his words are more eloquent than mine, so I'd like to read the statement. He says, I want to thank Councilmember Furtani for reading these brief remarks. I apologize for not being here tonight. Right now I'm proctoring my final exam. I'm very much in favor of the Shoreline Fire RFD proposal. Apologies if any of this is a repeat of what other council members have already said. The current contract that North Shore Fire Department has with the with Shoreline is working well. In LFP, we have seen similar or improved levels of service. And of course, it just went out. All right, let's see. The proposed RFD allows for further improvements by reducing some of the administrative overhead. And I'm particularly encouraged that the Shoreline and North Shore Commissioners, the Shoreline Fire Department Administration, and the Firefighters Union are all supporting the RFD. This seems to be a sensible step forward for LFP, Kenmore and Shoreline, and will continue to support our local firefighters. If I was president tonight, I would vote in favor of the resolution. And I think every time he said RFD, he meant RFA.
I understood what he meant, not what he said. So, thank you very much, Vice Chair Furtani. Other comments? I'm sorry, Councilmember Good, yes.
I think generally I'm in favor of it, though I would like to see a more specific cost to residents. I would like to see what assurances that Lake Forest Park could have for level of service. And I'd like to see that Lake Forest Park has representation on any board or, you know, some on decision making. And that's what my comments are.
Thank you, Councilmember Good. Colleagues, other questions? Councilmember Lebo.
I appreciate the public comment this evening, and I would like to have the opportunity to learn more about some of the comments made this evening with regard to assuring that Lake Forest Park has the level of service that we currently have that would go forth into the future. And that our resources would not necessarily be shifted to Shoreline, given the larger growth. And part of our resources include our financial resources that we would provide to such as RFA.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, other questions, comments? Okay, Deputy Mirbodi.
I'm generally in support of this, but I also share the concerns about ensuring representation for Lake Forest Park because of the larger communities and growth that are going to occur. And so that was part of our consideration in picking the this ILA over some of the other options we had. Think trying to, I and I appreciate the the statements that were made of assurance and reassurance to Lake Forest Park. But I do think that it's it's good to have an a good understanding of that rather than just hope it works out in the future concern. So I would like to make sure that Lake Forest Park is represented on the on the commission going forward and that there's equity for us and rather than majority rule in all in all cases. So so I'm generally in support. And I I note that the levy rate is not much less than the city's current levy rate for all the funds that we get for city operations. So fire operations are very important. But when the community starts thinking about property taxes that go to the city, our levy rate is not much higher than this levy rate that's being proposed in total, the levy rate plus the equivalent. We're certainly less than the dollar per assessed value, so.
Thank you, Deputy Mirbodi. Colleagues, what's your pleasure? Councilmember Riddle.
Can I have a follow up comment? Yeah, okay, I just wanted to clarify right now, the North Shore Fire District Board is composed of all residents from Kenmore. And again, they have been cognizant of our needs as they've been making decisions. And I think that because we have a good partnership and our communities are so closely tied. I do agree that it would be great if the board structured themselves in a way that guaranteed representation. And I would love to see an LFP individual on that board. It's been several years since we've had a representation on that board. So, again, it's kind of working well right now. I imagine it'll continue to work well.
Deputy Mirbodi.
I I would be glad. I wanted to be clear. I would be glad to take a vote this evening. I am in support or opposition and see where we stand. So I didn't want to have my comments indicate that I was asking for a delay.
Thank you. Vice Chair Furtani.
Is there any way that the council can get an answer to the question that a couple of council members have posed here, which is can we guarantee there will be representation from the city, from some of the residents in the city?
Chief, would you like to join us at the podium for to answer that question? Thank you. That way we can hear you.
Sure, and I I I think I covered a lot of this in my first presentation to you or my verbal presentation. I rushed through this one today just out of trying to be timely. But to answer the question, first of all, the representation is guaranteed for the North Shore Fire District and the Shoreline Fire District. Those districts will remain, and they will populate the the RFA board equally. And that would take a majority vote of the RFA board to change that. Those districts will remain. They it will not be at large. Now, as far as Lake Forest Park versus Kenmore, that's something that I don't, I can't, I can't control that. In the future, you could, we could set up the voting to be at large. We could set up Commissioner districts. We could do a number of different things. We could decrease the number equally, you know, or however from the existing fire districts. But that's something that was important to make sure that we separated out and made sure that at least from a North Shore and Shoreline standpoint, there's geographical representation. So as far as the, you know, the services that are going to be provided here, that's not changing. We're we're not changing the level of service. If anything, we'll be able to improve the levels of service over time as we reinvest the the savings that we're going to get in being able to augment what we're doing now. When I talk about moving, you know, apparatus and equipment around, I'm not, I'm not planning on changing aid one fifty seven here. But it would be able to to go anywhere in the entire jurisdiction to help out where there was vacancies, where there was holes. Just like we're adding more apparatus and more people to Station Fifty One in Kenmore to be able to represent or to be able to respond to. And in this area, a little bit better as well. So I just wanted to try and make sure there's some assurances there. Was there any other questions that colleagues, Mr. Lebo?
Just to follow up. So when you refer to the the majority, you're referring to in a RFA, the ten commissioners.
Correct.
And so that six of those commissioners could then decide how they wish to organize themselves in the future.
That's correct. They could change it. Now, some things would require a vote of of the jurisdictions to change something. So for example, if the fire districts, which both have five elected Commissioners right now, wanted to both drop to three, that would require, you know, a a a measure to to go back and and change that the the board makeup or the district Commissioners makeup.
Go back to whom?
Voters. So the the RF, there are certain things that the RFA board can control and change, and there's certain things that they cannot. So if they decided that they wanted to form Commissioner districts, for example, that would that would go to a vote. If it was the, if they want to decrease the number of Commissioners, you know, from the the two districts, that would take a vote as well.
But if it's a combined, if if you've combined into an RFA, isn't there just one?
There's one board.
One board.
Of ten.
Yes.
But it the way that the ten are populated, the plan is to have five from each of the fire districts populate that board to ten. So as a vacancy occurs, then it would be back to that wherever that that representative, that board member came from for that fire district to elect a new representative to the RFA board.
So when you say that a majority of the ten board members could change the board, what could they change if in fact the the five from each?
Well, they could put they could put forward to switch to Commissioner districts, to switch to at large, to change the fire district, make the the numbers that they give. But some of those would require, and I think I believe, don't, please don't quote me, I'd have to look into it. I believe that all of those would require a an additional vote, but it would be a decision that the RFA board would have to make to go back to the voters to make to make a change.
Can I follow?
Please follow up.
So you you heard a public comment this evening that suggested that because we have contract services that North Shore Fire District or the cities of Lake Forest Park and Kenmore sort of have a guaranteed level of service based upon a contract. How do you respond that going forward in an RFA that that would not necessarily be the case because the board would decide what the level of service is for the entire RFA?
Yes, the, well, I, the RFA would be strategic in their oversight of me and managing all of the resources and the personnel and where they're assigned. So, yes, the the RFA board could give me direction and say we're in dire straits financially, we need to reduce an aid car, an engine, you know, things of that nature. And then we would have to, you know, have a conversation about what we were going to do. But as a board whole, they would have, you know, that kind of influence, that strategic level input and perspective, which is also why it's important back to, you know, the the way that we designed the the plan to make sure there's representation from the different communities so that we couldn't just shut down, you know, apparatus or or stations or whatever and and move them without a consensus. The important thing here is that we're going to all work together and okay.
Thank you.
Deputy Mirbodi.
Yes, I I wanted to say I appreciate the questions from Councilmember Lebo and the responses that we got, and those have largely addressed my concerns.
Okay, thank you. Councilmember Good, I apologize, there's fireworks in the background.
Yes. Hello?
Go ahead. I'm joking.
Okay, I'm sorry. No, I'm I'm still, I I understand, and there's a lot of assurances, but I still don't see if there is a loss of or a reduction of service in Lake Forest Park that we have any say at all. There doesn't seem to be a structure that is has been at least addressed that if there is a level of service difference, what is the recourse that Lake Forest Park has? Because here is Lake Forest Park and Kenmore that is helping to fund this RFA. But they don't appear, at least from what I've heard, to have any say in anything. So what is present in the structure that will give Lake Forest Park a say in something other than just somebody's assurances that it will be okay? Because generally I'm in favor of it, but I am concerned that Lake Forest Park and Kenmore don't seem to have any ability to have a say in anything.
Chief Cowan, did you want to respond?
Well, currently, you are correct that the Commissioners of the North Shore Fire District all come from Kenmore. So there is, there isn't direct, you know, influence or or representation on the North Shore Board even right now. That could change. Any vacancy in the North Shore Fire District could get a Lake Forest Park. It could be all Lake Forest Park and no Kenmore. It, I I don't have control over the the makeup of the North Shore Board. But the North Shore, the elected, you know, Commissioners from North Shore will have an equal representation, a five to five vote. There's there's no opportunity for one, one of the districts to outweigh the other that was purposeful and intentional so that there was, you know, representation. And I can assure you that I have no plans whatsoever for decreasing the levels of service that are being provided. I think it's, you know, it's adequate to what we're looking at doing with the levels of service. I believe that we can use these resources that we have, you know, more efficiently. But I don't see any need to decrease, you know, the resources and and the and the staffing. If anything, I'd like to do some improvements and guarantee some better. I won't, I won't bore you with some of the our rescue and some of our, you know, capabilities on the water as well. So but that's that's augmenting, that's not, that's improving, not decreasing. So the, I mean, the the RFA board as a whole will be making, you know, decisions, strategic decisions about what we're going to do as far as spending money and investing in levels of service. And and, you know, helping to guide me and over and have oversight of me of how I manage those resources. But Um but uh, I don't think there's anything that's nefarious or anything that 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 it would be agenda driven on this. It's about how can we serve all of our our residents uh as as well as we can with the highest level of service.
Thank you very much, Chief. Colleagues, other questions for Chief Cohen? Councilmember Good, do you have, still have your hand up or follow up question?
Still have a hand up. Uh, so thank you for the those answers, but I still don't hear a structure in if Lake Forest Park does have an issue, I'm not saying they will. But what would be the recourse for Lake Forest Park if they were to deem somehow that there was something, you know, something that that they needed to be addressed? How could that be addressed? That's kind of what I'm 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 trying to get at, because right now it seems like they, Lake Forest Park can't say anything. So I'm just trying to make sure that Lake Forest Park has a say because a a contract is very specific about the levels of service that they will get. And and when we move to this other structure without any representation anywhere or a structure on on how how common or or suggestions or whatever that might come up. How will that, how how could that be addressed? So I don't mean to be a negative Nancy or or push you to the wall, but I I just want to make sure that we are, we are a very tiny city and we do get pushed around a bit. And I just want to make sure that we don't sign away something that we could, you know, just don't want to sign away anything, that's all.
Vice Chair. So Chief, if I may, um, to to address Councilmember Good's uh question, um, I I think it's kind of on us. I mean, the fact is that anybody here could have run for the Board of Commissioners for the uh North Shore Fire District. That's true, right? We're all able to do this. Um, and uh successfully, I run a campaign and nobody chose to do so. So I don't know that there is a structural fix that we could really uh impose on this current uh RFA proposal.
All right. Well, first of all, let me, uh, I I really enjoy having a a thorough discussion about things. So I I pushing me, pushing against me or anything, I actually enjoy making sure that everybody is feeling comfortable and has all the answers to the questions that they they have. So I I thoroughly and and, you know, would encourage everybody to to ask these pointed questions and so forth. And to your point, um, right now, there isn't representation from the North Shore Board equally between North Shore, or I'm sorry, uh, Kenmore and Lake Forest Park. You know, that is, that is uh out of balance. In the future, there could be commissioner districts. You, we could establish that, which would be more specific to to your point uh of making sure that there is representation from specifically from Lake Forest Park or Kenmore, but that would, that would be another vote. That would be something that's, you know, down the road. Um, and that would be something that would need to be supported by the RF, RFA board as a whole. So um, you know, that that's something that could happen. You could also do it at at large. But then you're not ensuring uh geographical representation at that point either. Um, but again, it could, you could end up with everybody coming from Lake Forest Park and Kenmore and none and none from Shoreline. Uh, it, if you went at large. So those are some of those options down the road, but that would require additional votes. We were trying to make sure that it's at least to start, to make sure that there was good geographical representation that's equal to what you have now. Because Ken, uh, Lake, Lake Forest Park and Kenmore in the North Shore Fire District would have equal vote to the Shoreline Fire Department and the Shore and the Shoreline elected commissioners. So there's, there's, it's the same situation that you have now, except it's in an RFA. And you'd actually have North, right now, the North Shore elected commissioners don't have input at a strategic level on the Shoreline Fire Department. I want to make sure that that's, that's clear. The North Shore Fire Department ensures that I am managing the ILA correctly. They they uh have taxing authority, they have uh ownership of the apparatus and and some of the apparatus and the facilities, things of that nature. They can try to, uh, you know, those, the setting of of levels of service here in in Lake Forest Park and Kenmore. They have, you know, things, things of that nature, but they don't have strategic input because that resides back with the Shoreline Board. This would give a equal seat on that board for, at a strategic level.
Have you mere body?
Yes, I wanted to say I appreciate this discussion and and it has addressed a number of my concerns because of the um equal representation um at this stage and the the process that it would take to kind of adjust that in a way that would be skewed. Uh, I know going back in the history of this, there was a time when we were looking for a Lake Forest Park president to run um for the North Shore District. And it was, it, and we have had one in the past, um, but it has been hard to find people. On the other hand, I feel that under the ILA, though all of our representatives have been from Kenmore, things have worked well and we have actually um seen some improvements in um the situation in Lake Forest Park for firefighting. So um after, you know, considering the answers to the questions and the discussions, I I I realize there's some slight element of risk that we have that we wouldn't, that we would get lost in the shuffle of the two larger cities. But uh I feel like we also have pretty good uh working relationships and partnerships. And if that came up, we would be able to have that dialogue and figure out some path forward. So uh with all of this, I much appreciate the questions and answers from my colleagues and from and from you today. But uh I'd be in support of this.
Thank you.
I've I've been also very excited about the relationship that we've developed uh with the North Shore Fire Department. It's, it's been a a good thing as far as levels of service and the financial savings.
Colleagues, any other questions for Chief Cohen? Uh, we'll continue our deliberation.
Thank you for allowing me to come back up and address these questions.
You bet. Thank you, Chief, for your willingness to do that. Colleagues, what's your pleasure?
I would like to move uh resolution twenty four nineteen ninety two to be in amended to be in support of Proposition One.
Second. It's been moved and seconded to uh approve Resolution Twenty Four nineteen uh nineteen ninety two, amended to reflect supporting, concerning Shoreline Fire Department, North Shore Fire Department, Position One, to create a regional fire authority. Is there any further discussion, colleagues? Nice to your first time.
Yeah, I just wanted to acknowledge um the work of Councilmembers Saunders and Goldman in getting the uh agenda item on tonight's agenda.
Thank you. Councilmember, colleagues, any other? Uh, uh, Councilmember Riddle.
And briefly, I I feel comfortable with this because as in any case, and if you don't agree with the elected officials and how they're operating, you vote in a new person. So that is always an availability, uh, having the five board commissioners uh be from our district.
Any other comments, Councilmember Lebo?
So I I very much appreciate uh the discussion and the comments this evening. Um, I'm generally uh supportive of where we have regional authorities that can provide services over a broad area, um, both for efficiencies as well as a level of service. I'm sort of conflicted with the idea that, uh, you know, we're being asked to make a um a resolution passed tonight and say in support of it. But at the end, um, I am generally supportive of these kinds of uh regional um authorities to provide these level of services. And we do have representatives that have been voted on by the public who are intended to look after our interest and that we need to provide our trust in them and support these kinds of uh public entities. So I will, with some reservation, vote in favor.
Thank you, Councilmember Lebo, for your comments. Any other comments? I hear none. Uh, all of us in favor of uh adoption of Resolution Twenty Four nineteen ninety two, uh, supporting uh Proposition One concerning Shoreline Fire Department, North Shore Fire Department, Proposition One, to create regional fire authority, please signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any nays? Guys have it, it passes unanimously. Thank you, Council, and many thanks to the folks that have made public comment tonight. Uh, with that, we are moving on to presentations. Um, Cory and Amber, welcome. We're having an update on the Lakefront Park Plan. Thank you for joining us. We're not even on consent yet. So the guest of nine o'clock is not going to happen. I'm sorry. Welcome, both of you.
Thank you for having us.
Up there to go in.
Okay, so thank you uh for the council's time this evening for this update on the Lakefront Park project. Um, I'll go ahead and get started. Okay, so we are officially in project phase two. This started in July twenty twenty four and built on our first project phase one. Um, we've got two pieces of the project kind of simultaneously moving forward. That's the early works uh phase. That's the selective site demolition. Um, and then the design development portion of the project, which is bringing the schematic design work um that we put forward in in phase one to a design uh, design plans that can be submitted for permits. So for our update on early works demolition, um, we have worked through uh multiple stages of this work since March of this year. We have been working towards a deadline, uh, the grant expiration deadline of um November thirtieth of twenty twenty four. So Cory, in communication with our RCO representative, has verified that the conditions of that grant have been met by the completion of the work successfully. So there is no um risk to jeopardizing that funding. We have finished on time and the city can enjoy the grant funds as they were awarded from our CO. So a number of things have been completed um in the construction phase of this project. So there has been selective demolition activities. So selective demolition, we're really referring to a deconstruction process. And I'll share a couple images of that. Um, there was also hazardous materials abatement. As we know, most of these structures were constructed in the twenties and thirties. So there were things like lead paint, asbestos, so that needed to be contend with, contended with safely. Um, and then there was also salvage. So we knew that there was viable building materials um in the structures, even though the structures could not be kept, but that still represent the history of the structures that were present on the site. So the desire was to keep those. That material has been stockpiled. And um we are intending for the work to be finished um the month of December, kind of the last stages of work are underway. And that will be completed prior to the end of the year. So here are some photographs of that uh selective site demolition, so the deconstruction activities. These show um the structures kind of in in various uh stages of piecing out. So again, this is uh pulling the material out, cleaning it, making sure that it's safely abated. And then the material has been stored, palletized and placed um into some of the remaining structures. And then also the brick is is stored outside and that is being kept safely and cleanly for use so that it can be used as part of the eventual work on the project. So the progress report for our design development, so we are in our fifty percent design plan. So that is the state of de- design drawings that'll be submitted for our permit applications. So we had a number of things that have been completed since July. So that is the development of the fifty percent drawings. We also had a another workshop, so workshop three of the project. This is one of two workshops in stage two, but it is the third so far for the project that occurred in uh um October. Our geotechnical investigations, um, those were completed and the report has been provided. So our geotechnical investigations included uh subsurface uh investigation. That's been done, uh some monitoring wells that'll monitor groundwater for a period of one year. Those are installed and we're still looking at that data. Um, but the report has been submitted in a preliminary fashion, and then once we get the results of that data, that'll be updated completely. So our pre-application meeting, so this is the formal um intro to the process. We sat down with uh representatives of the city to discuss the um, the development process. And so our pre-application meeting um is an important milestone to say that this project is moving ahead. Um, we're waiting on on the memo from the city, but we have gotten the preliminary guidance, um, and that meeting's been checked off. So we also met with the Parks and Recreation Board in November and then our fifty percent design drawing package. So that includes our preliminary specifications and outline of what we're anticipating, um, an update of the uh cost estimate. So this is the schematic design cost estimate annotated and marked up to represent the fifty percent plans. And then the fifty percent draft plans themselves um have been submitted to the city for review. So our state and federal permitting applications, these are the beginning of our local permitting as well. So we are submitting, uh, this is news that came out of the pre-application meeting. Um, the best course of action for this project is to submit a shoreline variance. If there's any specific questions about that, I'll, I can, it can get wordy. So I'll save that, see if there's any questions. I won't go too much into it. But so our applications are in development for that. We had them substantially um ready and completed when we were sat down for the pre-application meeting. Um, we are now actually, you know, finishing that preparation of permit package so that those can be submitted. We are anticipating uh submitting for the variance in December, so again, prior to the end of the year. Um, and then uh starting the time clock on our permitting. So for a summary of the workshop, um, we had about um fifty attendees at our in-person uh workshop. We did offer it in a hybrid format. So this included exhibits and an online survey. We had seventy seven responses to our survey. So the goals of this workshop were really to present the schematic design uh renderings and package. So we had an approved, um, you know, accepted schematic design at the end of phase one from the council. But this was really the opportunity to put all of those, all of those exhibits in front of the community, give them a chance to kind of stand in front of those exhibits, engage with the design team, answer specific questions. Um, we also asked for a review of the interpretive themes and then um, of course, gathering community feedback. So some um just kind of highlights from that. Uh, so general community feedback on the renderings, um, generally, this was positive. So we actually, we take a quantitative approach, we'll um record the positive mentions, negative mentions, and then come up with a net score based on how people discussed a topic. So we can objectively say that most people have positive sentiment about the design. It's not just um our bias as as a design team. So um, the most common concerns that people discussed were parking and cost. And um, we did have, uh, you know, it wasn't that, the comments and concerns were not um fully in agreement. So there was a lot of people saying, do you have to provide any parking? There was a lot of people saying, you know, maybe this is too much parking, or did you consider, you know, having these load and unload zones only, that, those types of questions. So it was really a discussion basis to the concerns that were um expressed, which is great, because we are still at fifty percent design. So we also had um a lot of recommendations from the community. So a lot of people, um, this, you know, they're accepting the design as it is and sharing additional ideas. So things like the picnic shelter design, the types of planting that they would like to see, all of these many things. And that is all information that's catalogued and that we um continue to use in our refinement of the design from fifty to seventy percent. So uh, some interesting things, um, one thing that we actually got a kind of a surprising amount of comments about was about the relative small size of the park and the number of structures remaining. So the first time, you know, earlier in the process, we heard a lot of people say, you know, please save more structures. And we knew that because of the grant terms and because of the the, you know, cost of an obligation of maintaining nineteen, twenty structures for the long term, comes very expensive and it's not really practical for a park of this size. Um, now we're sort of seeing that maybe a tide has changed and that um there is, you know, more people speaking to it, you know, the amount of structures that are remaining, even though it's substantially less than what was there when we started. So just an interesting kind of point came up through that discussion. So some of the main takeaways, um, the comments by and large are positive and constructive. So a lot of people saying, you know, yes, and, where you speak and support, and then have you thought about this, which is great. It means that the community is engaged in the discussion and excited to see um things moving forward and that they're not seeing it as done, which is wonderful, because we want to continue to use their engagement and feedback through this process. Um, and then we're also getting this kind of point, counterpoint represented on most issues. So I mentioned the parking, I mentioned the structures. Um, this kind of makes us feel like we've reached a sweet spot in where we are with the design, where the community is on board. We don't have a whole bunch of people who are saying this is done wrong. We've got people saying, you know, I understand why you did it this way and I I get that you're moving forward. So that's always a nice feeling. So a handful of comments are up here, um, some really great feedback. Um, it looks like this will be the heart and soul of the community. It's like a really great comment that somebody left in the survey, a handful of of other things. And then, of course, in the blue comments, you can see some of what's representative for that point, counterpoint. Um, you know, I encourage you to retain as many trees as possible, cut down more trees, you know, pretty few sides of a coin there. So again, the the work is continuing, the discussion is continuing, and so that's really wonderful to hear. Um, so the other part of the workshop was about interpretation. So this was the interpretive statements that um came out of the community engagement and the interpretive planning in phase one. And then also um the refinement of those interpretive statements in our work with the Parks and Rec Board. So what we heard was that um the storytelling of just people's activity on this part of the lakeshore is really interesting to the contemporary citizens of Lake Forest Park. So from pre-settlement times through the nineteen twenties uh recreation times and then through the natural resource conservation and public space um renovation that the that the community is undertaking now. So that's really the storytelling and the narrative arc that the community spoke um in in agreement on. So that's an exciting thing. As we move the design to seventy percent, these are the interpretive themes that will be working their way into um the integrated design of the park. So some of our next steps, um, so in twenty twenty five, we will be uh moving the design forward to seventy percent. Um, once we have our seventy percent plans completed, that's going to go to a cost estimation exercise. So the cost estimation exercise that we did, the outside consultant in phase one, was we finish our drawings and send it to them. And they look at it like they're going to be a bidding. was we finish our drawings and send it to them and they look at it like they're going to be a bidding contractor and they go through this fabulous exercise. It does not mean that that's what the park is going to cost. It means that this is a tool that tells us what direction this park will go. So it's a really, really helpful thing for decisions about cost management, value engineering, as we move the project from 70 to 100%. And it provides more data for the city and the council and citizens to make decisions. So that exercise, because it is basically not looking at the prior estimate, it's pricing this as a brand new project based on the 70% drawings. We're anticipating that that's going to take, you know, four to week exercise, a four to eight week exercise. It'll be an intensive process. So during that time, we'll be advancing the interpretive design. So now that we know what the park is going to look like. Roughly, we know where interpretation can go and what interpretation can look like. So there's a lot of content development that we need to develop. And then, you know, continue to bring that back to the city for for review. So our local permitting, this is this additional permitting related to the development permits. Land use and building permits, that process will be through 2025 as well. And then we do have another workshop in our scope. So right now, tentatively, that's in the late spring, early summer time. Of course, we'll be continuing our fundraising support. We've been through this full time, continuing to work with Corey to continue to hopefully realize some good news about fundraising for this project. And then we are continuing to work forward to a design completion at the end of 2025. And bid ready documents by the close of 2025 so that we can take advantage of hopefully a favorable bid environment, which we tend to see in that winter season of the year. So January 2026, we continue to work towards and for now are on continued to be on schedule with this project. So that is our update for today. I'm alternative to the council for questions.
Some funding, I don't know if we've been here since RCO was allowed it, but we did get 500,000 from the Aaliyah. And then I think Rod Dabowski also gave us another 500,000.
Yeah, thank you for mentioning that. Colleague, if you didn't hear, Councilmember Dembowski called me two weeks ago. Indicated that there's some additional $500,000 for the lakefront property for CIP improvements. Because it comes from bond. It's restricted funds, but but it's very positive and very, that's very thoughtful of him to include that in the county budget. Each little bit helps. So. Colleagues, questions for Corey or Amber? Customer, please.
For a comment, I really appreciate the engagement at the workshop. I wasn't able to stay for every board, but I was able to give you some, some thoughts. And then I did the survey online for my formal. It was, it was great to see the renderings and to really start bringing this to life for the community. And I think that's really helping the community get engaged. Looking forward, do you have a, do we have a plan to integrate individual donation funding and recognition on the site through some sort of token recognition on the site? Do we have plans for that?
So we don't have a concrete plan, but we have a lot of concepts. And this has been something when in phase one, when we were starting to do some cost mapping of what programs the project is likely to be eligible for and what are some other avenues? We went through a lot of exercises from things like sponsorship of trees and benches and site furnishings to integrated construction. So things like, you know, bricks in a walk. And then programs that would be basically you would run before construction and then you would happen in construction or a sustained donation. So something like, you know, the tags that you see at the market in downtown Seattle. So that type of thing. So we've discussed a lot of ideas. That fully articulated vision is not necessary for our permit applications. And so it has not been fully configured out. We do know though, that some of these things that allow for, you know, messaging, messaging boards, inscriptions, those types of things often have an interpretive connotation because it describes the ongoing relationship of citizens with, you know, the place that they're donating to. So that thinking is more of what we're doing fully in 2025 with our 70% design and into 100%. So also, when we talked about this last year, the council was working on a mechanism where donations to the city for certain projects would be allowed. And I know that the council has made some progress on that as well. So having all of those things in place will be essential to how the program is run and managed by the city to receive those donations so that they're, they go to this project.
Yes, thank you very much. I just want to express my appreciation to Corey and Amber and Facet and your team. And the volunteers with our Parks and Recreation Board who have been very engaged. This is my second time through this presentation. So I, I think I'm, I left both times with the, you know, just encouragement and optimism from the quality and magnitude of work that's happening day to day to move this project forward. So I, I think it's just very impressive what's been accomplished in the timelines that we have. I do want to echo Councilmember Riddle. I, this is something I've said to other council members recently. I think the way we did community engagement in this process with the workshops, the online component for the workshops, the original survey. And then the circling back with the latest information. I do think it's just been an excellent model for us. And, and I hope that we make sure that we capture the elements of it for future public engagement processes. Because I think it's been a great way to, first of all, we have the people who come. And, and but often people just can't come to the workshop. So the, having an online component for each of the workshops is really really valuable. And we get our numbers up in terms of participation. So I just think it's a model for us for the future going forward. Thank you.
Vice Chair for tonight.
Yes, and I wanted to express my thanks to your firm and all the wonderful outreach they have been doing. And you also have a whole lot of bricks. I wanted to commend, you know, the salvage operation. I was just stunned at the pallets of material and thinking that, yeah, that could be a potential fundraiser. So put my name down for Rick.
Customer reliever. Thank you for the presentation. I hope and I see that we've got a 70% estimate coming up in 2025 that the city can come forth with the what they perceive as the the total budget for the project and the updated funding plan, as well as to look at what we see as the maintenance costs and a funding mechanism for the maintenance. I'm concerned both in terms of how we fund the total project, as well as how we fund the maintenance ongoing. We have some wonderful spaces in Lake Forest Park that would benefit from additional maintenance. And so to take on such a well-developed space comes with a significant cost to maintain it at that level. Even our adjacent park to this space is not maintained at a level that I think most of the public would, would expect.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, other questions?
I'm sorry, I have one more question. Has there been archaeology work completed? And can you just briefly say what the results of that have been?
Sure. So the archaeological, the cultural resource screenings that we do is essentially a twofold process. So there's a rigorous documentation review of what may be there, what may be likely to found, to be found. What have other individuals found? What are similar sites around the area? And then there's an onsite component where there's actually digging that happens. And there's actually screening for artifacts that is guided by the preceding research work that happens. So the research is, you know, this is a, this has been an area of occupation for a very long time. It's of, you know, a lot of importance. That is more of a not right on where we are because that area was under the lake up until, you know, 1916, right? So in terms of the on the ground shovel testing that happened within the boundary of the park, it, you know, nothing came up, which was expected. And then of course, you know, what we, what we know about it being lake bed was then reinforced by the geotech report. So so we didn't find any artifacts necessarily on the site, but in terms of just the importance of this place for many, many, many generations of people since time immemorial, there have been, you know, lots of people in this area of the lake shore. And it's exciting that, you know, the public can continue to recreate in this part of the lake shore.
The best of all worlds.
Thank you. Colleagues, any other questions for Corey or Kim? Many thanks for all the great work you guys are doing. Really appreciate it. It's fun to see it progressing.
Thank you.
Thanks, everybody. Without an entertaining motion for adoption of the consent calendar. So moved.
Second.
Been moved and seconded to for adoption of consent calendar. Or is there any further discussion? Very none. That's is adopted by unanimous consent. Thank you, colleagues. We're on to ordinances and resolution for council discussion. Administrator Hill, item A. Resolution 241986, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract. The Court Contractors LLC for the construction of the Public Works Facility. Material bin covers. And just for everyone's edification, I would propose we take a five minute recess when we get to item nine. We've been at this for a while. Mr. Hill.
You're gonna make me go sit down.
After that.
Thank you, Mayor.
Two items.
Counsel. So as the mayor stated, this is the contracts for both Accord and Pace Engineering. This is for the material bin covers project up at Public Works Facility. As I mentioned at the past meeting, the project was advertised for bids back on July 25th and August 1st of this year. Five firms bid on the project and Accord Construction LLC in the amount of $449,051.78 was the low bidder. The engineer's estimate was approximately $50,000 over that bid price. And then construction services, this would be performed by Pace Engineering at a fee of $37,511. 8.3% of the construction cost for inspection. We need their expertise out on the site to do project management and inspections for us and report back to our project manager, who would be Katie, just to oversee that project. Total is within the budgeted amount in the 2024 capital improvement plan, which was identified at $600,000 to complete the work. So we are within that budget and there are sufficient funds to support both contracts. Just quickly, this is your second touch, but I do need to request approval of it tonight, waiving the three touch rule because in speaking with the contractor, if we don't do this before the end of the year, we've got steel prices that they've already been told will go, be going up. And our price would change. So to lock that in, I would like to be able to give them notice of award tomorrow morning.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Colleagues, questions for Phil on either of these two resolutions? Customer Riddle.
Briefly, does the cost that we have include kind of the disruption of what is happening on site as far as during the construction and?
Like public works operations as far as that. That's why in this contract, if you look, it has a start date no later than February 15th. We put that in there to get us through hopefully the winter months.
Okay.
So that means on February 28th, it's going to snow three feet and then we're gonna have a mess. But that's the latest that they were willing to delay it.
Okay.
Everybody.
I would support waiving the three touch rule for this one. This is a topic for those of of our newer council members. We have been discussing this and it's been on our wish list forever and ever. And we've never, we've only had community support and no community opposition to it over time. And certainly, City Administrator Hill makes a good point about costs increasing. And we certainly don't want to be chasing after increased costs if we can avoid it. So I just wanted to say, I haven't made a motion, but I'm, I'm open to making a motion.
Point, this is my 13th year having this discussion.
Longer than me.
Anyone else and probably preceded preceded me as well. So Councilmember, good, please.
Support of making a motion.
Okay, thank you. Any other questions for Administrator Hill? So let's take these independently, entertain a motion for waiving the three touch rule on Resolution 241986.
I move that we waive our three touch rule for the reasons I described previously on the resolution number that 241986. Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive the three touch rule on Resolution 241986. Is there any discussion on waiving the three touch rule?
I didn't realize that these material bin covers can almost drive. Now, it hasn't been that long. I really look forward to it. I look forward to the fact that it's set up to take solar if we get grants to do that. And I look forward to Public Works Operations being smoother once it's finished constructing.
All those in favor of waiving the three touch rule on Resolution 241986, please say aye.
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 Are there any ayes? Guys have it. Passes unanimously to waive the three touch rule. I entertain a motion for adoption of Resolution 241986 with the three touch rule waived. Deputy Reboi.
I move the adoption of Resolution 241986, authorizing the mayor to sign a professional services contract agreement with Court Contractors LLC for material bin covers construction. Second.
Point of order. This isn't a professional services, this is a construction contract. So just for the record.
Oh, yeah.
Oh. Do I have the wrong?
You've got the second, you've got the second one.
Oh, I'm sorry. Okay, I'm sorry. Um. Well, I read it off a different page. So let me renew my motion. I move that we, adoption of Resolution 241986, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Accord Contractors LLC for the construction of Public Works Facility material bin covers.
I will second the appropriate citing.
Thank you. Any further discussion? All those in favor of adoption of Resolution 241986, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Accord Contractors LLC for the construction of the Public Works Facility and material bin covers, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? Guys have it. Thank you, counsel. That passes unanimously. Moving on to Resolution 241987. Before we proceed or any further questions of Mr. Hill. The pertinent resolution. Okay, and is this, we similarly need to expedite this one as well as, is that correct, Mr. Hill?
Correct. We
I'm entertaining a motion to suspend the three touch rule on Resolution 1980, 241987.
I move to suspend the three touch rule for Resolution 241987 with Pace Engineers in order to take advantage of the current construction market.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to waive three touch rule on Resolution 241987. Any further discussion? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? Guys have it. Thank you. Moving on to full adoption of Resolution 241987. What's your counsel? Please, your counsel?
Let's move it. I move Resolution 241987, authorizing the mayor to execute a contract with Pace Engineers Inc. for the construction services, project management and construction administration for the Public Works Facility material bin covers. Second.
Been moved and seconded to adopt Resolution 241987, waiving the three touch rule. Any further discussion or comments? Hearing that, all those in favor of adoption of Resolution 241987, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Guys have it. That passes unanimously. I'm so pleased that these are not going to be the Tom French Memorial material bin covers. 20 years, 100 years.
We will finally have a public works director who does not have this as their to do.
Wow, that's a great start. Mr. Hill, we're, council, would you entertain the a five minute recess?
How about six?
Six it is. Thank you. We're adjourned for six minutes. I'm sorry, we're in recess for six minutes. Apologies. Hey, welcome back, everyone. Thank you for the brief break. Appreciate that, everyone. And we are moving on to item night or item nine, excuse me, ordinances and resolution for action. Mr. Hill is with us again for Resolution 241991, adopting the 2025-2026 Lake Forest Park State Legislative Agenda. Mr. Hill.
Thank you, Mayor. And I don't have much to say on this. You've seen this legislative agenda a couple of times. It was last presented to you when Shelley Heldur from GTH was here to present. And tonight, we're just asking for adoption of the 2526 legislative agenda, which outlines your top priorities for the city. And priorities that are either projects of a regional nature or in need of financial support or focused on state policies that have local implications. Adoption of it tonight will serve the city well as we have a meeting next week with our state legislators to transmit this to them and have discussions about our needs and kind of support we can drum up from the three of them. So stand for any questions.
Thank you, Mr. Hill. Colleagues, questions for Administrator Hill? Customer Riddle.
I agree with everything here. I think I've made this comment when we were trying to get the 40th Street Roundabout, a picture's worth a thousand words. If there's any way to sneak in a small picture for the Lakefront Park and especially for Ballenger Way potholes, that would be something I would recommend if you can nudge it in.
something I would recommend if you can nudge it in.
We never put photos on the legislative agenda. What we do is we do one pagers for specific projects. And then we meet with the legislators on those individual projects, because you can get more on there and it's more representative. The picture would be this big. Sorry for those on TV, but be very small picture and wouldn't relay the information. So we do do those one pagers. We've done that several times in the past.
Thank you.
Colleagues, other questions for Administrator Hill? Deputy Mayor Bodie?
I just wanted to say, having been at the Sound Cities Policy Issues Committee meeting this week, where they also were discussing Sound Cities, thirty seven cities draft policy agendas. So this goes to the policy positions. They are flagging the one percent cap and needing to have provisions that allow cities to deal with, you know, inflation and increased costs, public safety, transportation and other infrastructure, including water systems like stormwater. Did I say affordable housing? Affordable housing. And then also a general provision about, you know, please allow us to preserve a degree of local flexibility and control because a one size fits all for the state is is not always the best and most economical approach to go. There will probably also be a climate change addition that really relates to funding for climate change and also for please, oh, I forgot, please don't take away the Public Works Fund and use it to for the state deficit when we all have our own financial challenges in in the cities. So I I think we, I just want to say it's very positive in the sense they're complimentary. And we, I think, can we're always most effective when we're advancing requests for for projects and funding. So that's where we, as a small city, can be most effective rather than the broader policy positions.
Yeah, and you'll note at the bottom of the legislative agenda, we always say, you know, in support of AWC. And so that's that's where we come in on those larger issues. But yeah, we really need to focus on local.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Colleagues, other comments or questions? We are looking for action tonight. I'd entertain a motion once again to waive the three touch rule. Vice Chair Ferretani?
I move that we waive the three touch rule on resolution twenty four nineteen ninety one because basically that we have discussed this and there haven't been any substantive questions.
Second.
Been moved and seconded twice. Any further discussion on waiving the three touch rule? All those in favor waiving the three touch rule on resolution twenty four nineteen ninety one, please say aye.
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 Any ayes? The ayes have it. That passes unanimously to waive the three touch rule and entertain a motion for adoption of resolution twenty four nineteen ninety one. Vice Chair Ferretani, once again.
I move resolution twenty four nineteen ninety one, adopting the two thousand twenty five, two thousand twenty six Lake Forest Park State Legislative Agenda.
Second.
It's definitely caroling season. I can tell you guys have your act together there. It's been moved and seconded to adopt resolution twenty four nineteen ninety one. Is there any, are there any further comments or discussion? Hearing none, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes? Thank you, counsel. A resolution twenty four nineteen ninety one passes unanimously after waiving the three touch rule. With that, we're moving on to item B, ordinance twenty four thirteen oh three, amending chapter twelve dot two six of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code in accordance with amendments to state law adopted in Senate Senate Bill fifty two ninety. Director Hoffman has the floor.
Welcome.
Thank you, Mayor and Council. Mark Hoffman, Community Development Director. This ordinance responds to recent legislation that has the purpose of streamlining or helping out with the review and permitting aspect of housing. So Senator Mullet's sponsorship intended to do that. The proposed ordinance responds to those sections in fifty two ninety that relate to the city of Lake Forest Park, the city of this character size, population, and our code. It proposes amendments to the code. This is the third presentation tonight. At the second presentation, we made a three changes to the recitals, no changes to the proposed text amendments. One was to respond and clarify that the intent is to offer no refunds because of the four measures already in place. The other measure, no, the other correction was to clarify that we received no comments in response to the expedited review from Commerce. The public hearing date is corrected and we've added December twelfth as the third presentation, and that concludes the amendments. Staff's recommendation is for adoption.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Colleagues, questions for Director Hoffman or comments?
Mr. Levo. I just offered Director Hoffman. Thank you.
Thank you. Thank you. Councilor Levo, with that, we'd like to move ordinance twenty four thirteen three. Vice Chair Ferretani?
I move ordinance twenty four thirteen oh three, amending chapter sixteen point two six of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code in accordance with amendments to state law adopted in Senate Bill fifty two ninety.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded. Are there any further comments or discussion? All those in favor? I'm sorry, Vice Chair Ferretani?
In addition to thanking Director Hoffman, I like the fact that we're adopting this rather than the model ordinance because it really is tailored to our city.
Many thanks. Any other comments? Okay, with that, it's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance twenty four thirteen oh three, amending chapter sixteen dot twenty six of the Lake Forest Park Municipal Code in accordance with amendments to state law adopted in Senate Bill fifteen twenty, fifty two ninety, sorry. All those in favor say aye.
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 Are there any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you, counsel. That passes unanimously. And on to the the big enchilada, Director Hoffman, we are moving on to ordinance twenty four twenty three oh six, adopting the two thousand twenty four comprehensive plan update as the comprehensive plan for the city of Lake Forest Park. Mr. Hoffman?
Thank you again. Tonight is a huge moment for staff in the community and the council. A little background for the tape. Again, it's a two-year process mandated by the Growth Management Act. The first year was primarily the grant and arranging that interagency agreement with Commerce. The legislature provided funding for these mandates, which is a large difference from prior legislation. Once that was in place, the city contracted with SCJ Alliance. Once that was in place, a lot of work was done on the vision and mission in the existing plan to confirm that is the path for the community. Year two consisted of many meetings at Planning Commission, special meetings, regular meetings, open house workshop. A recommendation, oh, I and I should not fail to mention, it included the Tree Board, Parks and Rec Advisory Board, Climate Action Committee, pretty much a conversation with every committee commission or group in the city of Lake Forest Park. In September, the Planning Commission recommended a draft comprehensive plan update to the city council. It included a list of primary issues to focus on that may not have been fully resolved or unanimous at the Planning Commission. The city council has, I believe, had this item in nine meetings since September. I will add that other processes were completed behind the scenes. After the recommendation from Planning Commission was made, we submitted at the beginning of October to Commerce for the required sixty day review. That ended on the eighth, this Sunday. In November, we circulated a determination of non-significance for the SEPA Environmental Review. There was no appeal of that determination and there were no comments specific to the environmental review. That period ended December third. On December second, the Planning Commission held a required public hearing. I believe there were five speakers, majority in favor, no specific amendments or issues were brought up that needed to be addressed. And that brings us to tonight. The key of being passed at December eighth is that the Commerce sixty day review period is over. They're about as busy as every city. They were not able to get us final comments before the eighth. But they did include three comments that we went over in the workshop tonight, Wash Dot, DNR, and PSRC, Puget Sound Regional Council. Since Sunday, we were able to meet with Commerce staff and get their final comments into draft form. And then as of yesterday, confirmed that those draft comments are final. So the word draft at the top of page one is now removed. They will be received fully by the city through Plan View and become formal. But for purposes of tonight's meeting, they are final. We have a draft ordinance introduced on December second after the public hearing. That is before you tonight for repeal of the current two thousand fifteen comprehensive plan and replacement with this two thousand twenty four update. The public hearing draft remains in place. One important conversation tonight is that amendments revisions were made since December second in response primarily to the four comment letters received with the Commerce review. A few other changes that were mentioned at the workshop were just formatting changed to the table of contents. There is a redundancy in the listing of appendancy pages. The glossary is in the current version, was not in the document on December second. It's ministerial, but it's confirmed those two things were made. We made three color changes to an exhibit on page ninety nine to accurately depict three specific lots. That does not represent a determination or change to the actual designation. It's a correction of an existing exhibit. Those are not substantive. The key is that the draft ordinance that you have adopts the public hearing version by calling it Exhibit A. And I need to clarify that at this moment, based on the workshop from six to seven P M. tonight, when we went through the four comment letters and discussed that those possible amendments make for a better document or not substantive, that the current version is the seven P M. version tonight with those format changes. And the consensus of the council from the workshop and not the December second paper online version. So it has been changed, but not substantive. Those were shared with the city attorney. The consensus was to make those changes in this version by the council. And that's what before you in this ordinance at this time, that would, if acted upon tonight, the city would meet the December thirty first, two thousand twenty four deadline mandated by the Growth Management Act. Up till now, it was a periodic update required every eight years. After this December, it'll be every ten years. But the next one is in ten years. This carries out that planning horizon or period through two thousand forty four. And we very much thank the community, all committees, commissions, everyone we've talked to and the council, and very much recommend adoption. Thank you.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. Colleagues, questions for Director Hoffman? Comments are okay as well. Deputy Mayor Bodie?
I wanted to thank Director Hoffman for his leadership, jumping in to this with both feet early on in his tenure with the city and for the planning commissioners who held many extra meetings and for the public who have testified at our public hearings and in written comments. It's been a massive effort and I think we're in a good place. And compared to other cities, we we certainly have more unanimity of view as a as a community. Other other city councils are facing a lot more difficulties. So we've been lucky to have the leadership and the participation that we have, and I just want to say thank you.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor. Councilor Levo?
Thank you. Deputy Mayor Bodie, I echo those comments and sentiments. And having been a member of the Planning Commission for the two thousand fifteen, I'm very pleased to see that we have a new comprehensive plan that we're going to adopt tonight. There's no pride of authorship, but rather to recognize that in the times that have changed since two thousand fifteen, this is a really a great comprehensive plan. And it really speaks to the involvement of everyone, including the public, to make this really a terrific plan, and I'm wholly supportive of it tonight. Thank you.
Thank you, Councilmember. Vice Chair Ferretani?
Yes, and I want to echo all my colleagues' thank yous. But I also want to point out that for for the reading public, I think one of the things that I really appreciate about this plan is the emphasis on climate and the fact that basically it's woven throughout. I know we're working on a separate climate element, but just the fact that we're talking about things like resilience and mitigation throughout the documents speaks volumes for the values of the city.
Thank you, Vice Chair Ferretani. Councilor Riddle?
I as well was working with you on Planning Commission back in two thousand fifteen. And I have to say, this round has been a lot easier on me than being on the Planning Commission last time. I really do appreciate the amount of work that went into this. I'm knowing, we've done it before, knowing that it is a lot, and our community has has helped us. And I think echoing, councilmember, I just want to call you by your first name.
That's fine. I'll remember Tracy.
Tracy, that's fine, sorry. It is late for me. This this has a lot of elements kind of connected through it and reinforcing from land use into housing into transportation. And it's really a very well-written document that really kind of self-references important themes throughout it. And again, I appreciate that we'll have a chance next next year to add the Climate Action Plan pieces into that Climate Action section. But anyways, I I just want to say how important this is to get to this point and how happy I am with the work that has been done by all those that were behind making this happen.
Thank you, councilmember. I want to check with our colleagues online. Councilmember Good or Councilmember Goldman, would you like to make any comments?
Sure. I appreciate Director Hoffman's work on this as well as the collaboration between everybody and everybody's opinions and thoughts that went into it because that's what makes it so good.
Thank you, Council. Councilor Goldman?
Yeah, hi, everyone. Yeah, I don't have anything really new to say. Just my gratitude to Director Hoffman and all the the Planning Commission. I saw firsthand what the Tree Board was doing, and they made it relatively easy for us to kind of go through because they did such a good job with the initial product. So I think it's a really good comprehensive plan, and then I'm looking forward to when we add in the climate element next year.
Thank you very much, councilmember. I'm going to exercise chair's privilege here to also thank Director Hoffman for jumping into the fray here and taking the ball and running with it. Many thanks, Mark. I mean, outstanding work by you, your team, the Planning Commission and and other intersections there as well, many members of the community. It's a huge lift. And hearing, as Deputy Mayor Bodie's indicated, what's going on in other cities and the struggles they've had to find consensus and to find ways moving forward is it's it's commendable, the amazing work that you guys have done. It really is a milestone.
Thank you, Mayor. If I could make one more comment, I keep looking up at the participants. I'm hoping that Christina is in attendees.
Yes. We'd be remiss if we didn't thank Christina.
Absolutely. And in thanking her, I'll make one point. Since I arrived in January, one, it's this is very much a public process. What capture the community's sentiments, not weaken trees, not weaken critical areas, but respond to regional plans, respond to recent legislation. I'm grateful that we had a contract with SCJ, but more than that, I'm grateful that it was Christina that was the staff representative. She participated at Town Center in the master plan, learned about the community, and at every moment through this year was involved with every step. And so when I hear comments about how it's written, how it's cohesive, how it addresses, and we use and I have not heard that it's redundant and full of useless stuff. That's a credit to Christina and how well she knows the community, and we would not be here tonight on December twelfth with this document without her, and I thank her very much. With this document without her, and I thank her very much.
Thank you, Director Hoffman. With that, I'd like to give the honors for. Making the motion to Deputy Mayor Bodie as liaison to the planning commission.
Uh, actually. Councilmember Lebo is now the.
Oh, that I apologize. That's of course, of course.
So it should be. It's all second your motion.
You did it for so long. Yeah, I'm sorry, John.
Yes, you know, I did it for a few years.
Yes, for a few. Many years.
You know, it's sort of like. Those that come in at the last moment take credit. I think it's.
Fair enough.
Um, with that, I move that uh we adopt ordinance twenty four. Dash twenty three oh six adopting the twenty four twenty 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 four comprehensive plan update as the comprehensive plan for the city of Lake Forest Park.
Second.
It's been moved and seconded to adopt ordinance twenty four twenty three oh six adopting the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan. Update as the comprehensive plan for the city of Lake Forest Park. Are there any further comments or discussions?
I'd like to clarify that the version we are adopting is.
The seven P M.
Is the seven P M. Version from December twelfth, twenty twenty four.
Thank you for that. Any further discussion? Uh, yes. It's proud. Oh, oh. That's okay. All right. Thirteen oh six. Ah, here we are. Yes, okay, down below. Under the attachment. So um just for clarity, uh it has been moved and seconded. With the council's agreement. To adopt ordinance number twenty four thirteen oh six adopting the twenty twenty four comprehensive plan update as the comprehensive plan for the city of Lake Forest Park. This hot off the presses seven P M. Version. Is that correct, colleagues? Make sure we're all in agreement here. Okay, all those in favor signify by saying aye.
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 Are there any ayes? That passes, you know, it's like congratulations, everybody. Very well done, Mark. Thank you. Thank you, Christina. Really appreciate it.
Yes. Congratulations, and thank you all.
Thank you. Have a great evening.
You too.
Okay, uh, we're on to simpler items, but no less important. Um. Mister McLean is bringing us uh Resolution twenty four nineteen ninety adopting the city of Lake Forest Park City Council Meeting Calendar for twenty twenty five. Welcome, Matt.
Thank you, Mayor. Um, it's pretty simple. This is the time of the year where we set the council meeting dates for the next year. We included the budget and finance. Meeting dates on there just for transparency's sake. But their. List of meetings is in your packet. Uh, there are two meetings that are on holidays. Um. The January twentieth committee, the whole meeting. Um, falls on Martin Luther King Day. I proposed options to hold it on January thirteenth or January twenty seventh before the regular meeting of that day. So starting at six would mean he would only have an hour for that meeting. And also the June nineteenth budget and finance meeting because of Juneteenth. Possibly holding that before the. The. June sixty, June twenty sixth regular meeting or just canceling it altogether. So.
Thank you, Mister McLean. Um. Let's take them one at a time. January Committee of the Whole. Uh, there are options to either. A, not have the committee of the whole in January, or B, have it on January thirteenth. Or on January twenty seventh at the end of the month. Council, what's your pleasure?
Twenty third.
Twenty seventh?
That's the twenty third.
It's the twentieth, so then the regular meeting will be the twenty third.
Right?
Right? Am I calendar incorrect?
Oh, you're right. Um, I'm just.
Yes, twenty third.
Twenty third, okay, I was looking at.
Oh, I meant the following Monday, the twentieth, twenty seventh. Sorry.
Well, that's what you have in the background here, Matt. So, yeah, twenty seven.
It would help if I had the.
It's okay. You're you're fine. Um.
So it's either Monday before or Monday after.
Uh, yeah, twenty seventh. So the two Mondays are the thirteenth or the twenty seventh.
Or another option would be hold on the twenty.
Or before, yeah, on the twenty third.
Uh, I would be okay with it being before the business meeting on the twenty third. It's the beginning of the year. We probably uh won't have a lot of meat to go through. So an hour should be sufficient.
Colleagues, colleagues has been proposed to have the meeting in the hour preceding the meeting on the twenty third. Is that acceptable?
I'm okay with that.
Get a thumbs up and an affirmative. Okay? All right, let's do that. And then um June nineteenth falls on. Is Juneteenth. That's the budget and finance meeting. What's your pleasure, council? It can be. Be before the regular meeting on June twenty six or cancel. Those are the two options.
Uh, I would propose that we do it before the twenty sixth.
Okay, same same kind of format. Do I hear nods?
Yes. It's okay.
Excellent. Um. With that, I entertain a motion to adopt Resolution twenty four nineteen ninety adopting the city of Lake Forest Park City Council Meeting Calendar for twenty twenty five. With the amendments to include um the. Uh, committee of the whole in meeting before the regular council meeting on June twenty third, excuse me, January twenty third. And the June meeting to be held. Uh, prior to the June budget finance meeting to be held prior to the June twenty sixth regular council meeting. All those.
I move.
Motion, sorry.
I I move all those words you just said.
Second.
You could just say ditto or something. It's getting, it must be getting late. Uh, any further discussion, everyone? Anyone? All those in favor, please say aye.
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 Okay, any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you very much, Matt. Appreciate that. All right, uh, with that, we are, we have a couple items under other business. Uh, we have the addition. Uh, did you want to read?
Just read it.
Title of that or?
Sure. Okay, so um I'd like to move for council approval of the settlement and release agreement that you all have on your desks.
Second.
It's going to move and seconded to. I'm sorry.
We need it, Ken.
What else?
Just read the first paragraph.
Read the first, okay, I'll I'll read the first paragraph. Uh, this separation and release agreement is entered into by the city of Lake Forest Park and Jeffrey Perrigo. The city and Mister Perrigo shall collectively, you know, as the parties until the context clearly indicates otherwise.
Is that clear enough?
Me neither, Kate.
I got you.
It was signed uh by both parties on, well, by Jeffrey Perrigo on eleven oh four twenty twenty four. And by Philip Hill on eleven fourteen twenty twenty four.
Second.
Okay, thank you, everyone. Any uh comments or discussion? All those in favor of approving the settlement and release agreement. The separation agreement. Between the city of Lake Forest Park and Jeffrey Perrigo. Uh, signed um on respectively by Mister Perrigo on November fourth and Mister Hill Administrator Hill on November fourteenth, please say aye.
Aye.
Are there any ayes? The ayes have it. Thank you, colleagues. Um, I would entertain a motion to excuse Councilmember Saunders.
I move to excuse Councilmember Saunders.
Second, okay.
You got it.
Any further discussion? All those in favor of excusing Councilmember Saunders, please signify by saying aye.
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 Any ayes?
Nay.
Uh, record reflects one, one nay and six, six ayes. Ah, thank you. Uh, one other item of other other business, joint meeting. While we don't have to necessarily make a full decision tonight, we need a recommendation for a joint meeting.
Shoreline City Council.
Yeah, with the, I'm, thank you, Councilor. Um, between the Shoreline City Council and the Lake Forest Park City Council, some dates that are available are May twelfth. June ninth, June twenty third. And July fourteen.
It would suggest that July, June twenty third is not going to work.
Any other dates that don't work?
May, the May, I would prefer not to have the May date because I uh have other commitments.
Okay, uh, that would leave us with. Joe, wait, you said which one didn't work?
I think it isn't June twenty third when we're going to have the uh business and finance meeting?
Yes. Prior to our regular meeting.
Prior to our regular meeting.
Yeah, yeah.
Let's do twenty six.
It's a cow.
Oh, the June twenty third, yeah, was the, was the cow. Uh, okay, so that is.
We moved.
Uh, may I suggest? June ninth.
Yeah.
June ninth, fourth.
I don't want to have any heartburn over that. Okay, thank you, colleagues. We'll see how that shakes out with our our friends at Shoreline. Okay, um. See, moving on here, uh, council member reports. Any council member reports? Councilmember Ferrati, Vice Chair Ferrati.
Thank you, Mayor. And uh um I just wanted to uh report on the Climate Action Committee. Uh, they had a joint meeting with Ken Moore, uh Climate Action Committee. And it was a very fruitful discussion, seeing the similarities and differences in our approach. Um, part of the interest is that uh um we're starting to. Form a regional thing. Uh, Ed- Edmonds has a climate group that's not officially affiliated with the city. But it's looking for city uh recognition, and so they tap both of our brains, let us say, both the L F P and the Kenmore C A Cs to. Figure out how to get that done. And so there was a lot of fruitful discussion.
Thank you, Councilmember. Any other Councilmember reports? Deputy Mayor Bodie.
I uh attended last night the Sound Cities Policy Issues Committee. Uh, and uh we have um. Uh, Chris Roberts from Shoreline is the chair for another year. So uh and uh. Uh, the. A representative from Covington is the vice chair going forward. Um, we had a good discussion of a number of topics. I won't mention the state legis- the the Sound Cities legislative agenda, because I already did, but. Uh, we had a long presentation from King County Solid Waste to talk about future. Waste disposal locations, and this is like a two-year process to come up with a plan by twenty twenty seven. There was a lot of uh discussion and concern about it because the two options they're seriously looking at. Uh, because our our local facilities will be filled up are uh basically. Uh, taking our waste to another location on rail cars. Uh, possibly into Oregon for disposal or um or burning it. Uh, transporting it and burning it at an approved high. Volume burn facility. Only a lot of those are shut are shutting down. And uh so there was a lot of concern. Uh, expressed by cities that we need to take more interest in this because the two options. I don't seem to be leading towards um. Uh, trucking or uh railroading our waste to Oregon. Um, and that didn't seem to be the most environmentally sound issue, so there there could well be environment versus um. Cost issues. And uh environmentally, the burn approach, the high vol- high. High volume burn is preferred. There's also possibilities of generating electricity with the waste. But there is apparently a state law that prohibits that from being marketed in our state. Uh, so news to me. Um, anyway, I'm just flagging it because Councilmember Cassover isn't here. And there there was, there were a lot of uh city representatives saying. We should get ahead of this instead of being stuck in twenty twenty seven in a reactive mode. I I don't know that our city has a a lot of. Uh, bandwidth to weigh into that. I'm just, I'll continue to keep you up to date basically on on the progress. Uh, right now, they're, they they've done this initial survey and they're going to start. A C P A process in January. So.
Thank you, Deputy Mayor Bodie. Colleagues, any other council member reports? Any council committee reports? I'm sorry, Councilmember Goldman.
Um, yep, two, and I'll be brief. The first is Seashore. Um, we heard from Wash Dot about the revive I five project. There's over the next couple of years, there's going to be a number of projects on I five. From about the Ship Canal Bridge towards downtown. Um, so. Consider alternate routes, public transit, and we approved our legislative agenda. And then the tree board met last week, and they have. Pretty much gotten their work plan set for next year. The hope is in January, they're going to finalize their recommendations regarding exceptional tree diameters. And also they wanted to share that uh the King Conservation District has a tool called Tree Platter. Uh, it basically, they're looking at, the conservation district's going to be looking at canopy coverage. Um, it's what we do with our, with Light Art, but basically the conservation district would do it for us, for us if we opt in and and basically pay them for it. Um. A lot of cities in King County have already done it. Uh, Kenmore and Bothell and Woodenville have all opted in. Um, and so. That'll be our turn, I think, sometime early next year. Um, it basically looks at tree canopy by census block, so we can see details about, you know, where we're doing well and where we could use improvement.
Thank you, Councilmember. Colleagues, other. The other reports. Okay, uh, I'll be real brief. Um. We did have a storm. Um, I know there was a lot of frustration out there in the community about the response of Seattle City Light. Administrator Hill and uh the team are. Are going to be holding Seattle City Light accountable. There's post-action. Post-mortem, if you will, on the on the event, and we will be expecting to see a visit from a senior member. Of the Seattle City Light team at some point in near future. Uh, you may have noticed the. Apology letter that was sent to directly to me from Seattle, Seattle City Light C E O. Uh, I'm sure there are lots of lessons to be learned. Um, that evening uh between midnight and two thirty, I drove about fifty miles. All over the city, um, sometimes multiple times because I couldn't go the right way I needed to go. Big shout out to the Public Works Crew and the P D. Um, Demani was out there. I kept running into him in the dark, who was one of our. Uh, leaders in the, in Public Works, and they were doing a fantastic job of getting things um cordoned off, at least with caution tape and some other things to. Um, barriers when they could. Um, it was, it was challenging. Uh, if the biggest impact or biggest impactful. Event was the giant tree that came down on Fortieth Place, took out. Almost a block and a half of telephone poles and the crossbars. So uh Seattle City Light regrettably underestimated the amount of uh crew, size of the crews that they needed to respond to that. Talking about multiple poles, a big stack of poles on either end of the site to get that, get things back up. And then compounding the problem, the fiber optics and the telecommunications cables, really complicated efforts as well. Uh, because of weight and because of the proximity to. Various things. Uh, we still are dealing with that um relative to one of the traffic cameras. Uh, but I would just say overall. Um, our emergency management coordinator, Kevin, did a fantastic job. Public Works, Justin, Demani, Matt. Uh, I would say, if you haven't heard, the Public Works Crew had to do, Phil, was it seventy houses? That they had to run the generator around for twenty, thirty minutes.
It's just over, it's just over fifty houses. So we have fifty homes with grinder pumps because they're on septic and they only work when you have power. And so our crews had to render the generator and go house to house to pump these. They did it twice during the event. It takes twenty to thirty minutes per home to. Two workers to go out and and manage that, so. And then they were also, they had the vector. Truck over at the lift station, which does not have emergency backup power, the new one will. Um, to have that cleaned out, to keep that from backing up, and that there were several instances of that, and those costs um are going to be submitted to King County. Um, to hopefully get reimbursed for those, because they were in direct response to that weather event.
Uh, thank you. Everyone did a fantastic job. We will. Learn from this and hold City Light accountable for um making sure that the response is much um swifter. It it's notable that there were some areas of the community that were back on and within eight. To eighteen hours and other areas that the community didn't come on for almost five days. So. Um, just point of interest, you may not know this, but. Uh, Town Center is on two separate grids, so half Town Center, half of Town Center came up when Fortieth Place was back online. The second half, including the wing that includes Albertson's and Angler and Maude, did not come back on until um Brookside Triangle was restored for power. Um, unfortunate incident, but thankfully no one was hurt and um and. Public Works did an absolutely outstanding job getting prepared and and moving forward. Couple of the quick things, um, you may have heard when I said earlier, I've had multiple conversations with Councilmember Dembowski. Um, he is um, actively supporting us in our efforts for various things around our community. And we thank him very much for that. Including the gracious five hundred thousand dollars he put into the budget that the council, county council approved for improvements to the lakefront park. Every bit counts. And that is not an insignificant amount of money to help us out on various things. We really thank him for that. Um. Let's see. Couple of other things. I don't know if you had a chance, actually, you wouldn't have had a chance to talk about it. Uh, customer for Tony and I saw a bunch of wonderful um, hokani a couple of weeks ago, uh, with Mister Admin was actually out there too. Uh, over in um, Samamish. Absolutely extraordinary. I've never seen anything like it. If you'd like to see some of the videos. Um, the idea of uh, of and the old folklore that you could walk across the creek on the fish was almost true there. It was unbelievable. Hundreds and hundreds of fish in that creek. And um, I did not get a chance to go to the upper reaches of that property, but I have an invitation to go back, actually with my little one to visit to see uh, the other restoration work that this homeowner has done. It's quite extraordinary. And the last thing is, uh, there are a lot of deer out, folks. Be careful. I was on fortieth today, right at the deer signs and three went right in front of me and earlier today on the Burke Elman, four deer went by me um, running through the trees. So completely separate groups, they're all over. Pretty fun to see. Uh, with that, and uh, oh, I do want to say a big shout out to the P D for their accreditation. For your process, way to go, chief and and Ross. And Diego is a huge mess. And I know, I know, uh, with no findings. So outstanding work, as always by the department. Got a lot of things that we can be thankful for this year. Um, really great work by the staff. Any other things, Mister Hill, you would like to interject from the C A's report?
Just want to pile back on on the the bomb cyclone. I put, we put a lot in the C A report, so I encourage you to read it. Um, P D, outstanding as usual, a brand new Public Works Crew. We have two gentlemen on there. They would be Ian and Matt. That have been here a while. Justin was in his two and a half week phase and you know, the rest of our crew has three or less years of experience in public work. So the the thing that I'm most proud of, we did not get a single call about our P D or a Public Works, anything negative. Um, it was all about Seattle City Light. And so and they, we are talking about having them come in January. So we're working with our local representative on that right now. And then just one last thing I'd like to point out is um, the the need for NEMCO and how amazing Kevin was through this. You can ask anybody, ask the chief, ask Public Works. Um, the coordination and communication, and I would not have want to gone through this without his expertise and his help. And his rallying of his volunteers. Helping us out, you know, keeping City Hall open a little bit longer on Saturday for charging stations. Um, it's just great coordination. And so, you know, I've told you, that's my big charge in this upcoming year is find a way to keep NEMCO together in the form that we can afford it. And so um, anyway, well done on everybody's part. And we had quite a contingency here in City Hall. We were only closed one day. And then we had passports back up and running. We had several of us in here working. Finance Department had their folks working. Anybody that we could get in here, we had in here working. The rest were working remotely from home. I think we only had one individual who was able to do that. So that's all I've got.
Thank you, Mister Hill. And that reminds me to uh, there were many residents that were not aware that City Hall was a, a, available to shelter or to charge phones or to come and and, you know, and commiserate with other folks. And um, I received a, a, a let's say, a heated voicemail from a resident. And when I spoke with her and indicated that City Hall was was open and opportunity for people to come down and charge their phones or to get support or get directed to various things. It's important. So we need to make sure we keep spreading the word that that during storm events, if at all possible, we will provide the opportunity for people to come in. It may not have been super warm. Our generator can only compensate so much. Yeah, so um, fortunately, it was not cold during that event. We will have them again. There's no question. So it's really, hopefully we can learn from it. And the next time it happens, we can make sure that people get the word that 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 is an opportunity.
It does make you think about the Cascadia earthquake that is largely predicted because, as I recall from previous trainings I did, people, the, the rule of thumb is be prepared to be on your own for three weeks. Uh, you know, and you won't be able to get, if you think you're going to drive to Eastern Watertown or fly out, you can't get there. Everything will be commandeered. So uh, get to know your neighbors.
And I will add that um, NEMCO has a radio training for, for you to be able to use um, the G M R S radio.
Oh, yeah.
So that um, and there's a, there's a thought to create pockets of communities that all have kind of the radio. So during one of these events that you can check in on your neighbors. And so um, I'm hoping that we can get some traction on that program. As we've noticed, some of us get stuck in our neighborhoods and it's good to be able to just call around uh, to, you know, elderly neighbors to make sure that they're there and okay, without having to go out in the wind and the rain and risk yourself.
That, that actually, just very quickly, that reminds me, uh, one of the things that I did was drag my battered old generator that's very long in the tooth down to a couple of houses who the residents did not know they had sump pumps in their basements until their alarms went off. So note to anyone out there, if you have a crawl space or a basement, make sure you don't forget that you have a sump pump uh, during an event like that. Fortunately, there was not a lot of water. You know, it was a significant rain event. Uh, with that, we could ha- have fun talking about this on Yeah, you bet, chief. Of course.
Because we're not going to see each other for quite a while till like January ninth, but uh, we have shop with the cop this Saturday. Uh, we have eleven families from Lake Forest Park um, that are going to be joining us. And they're from Brookside Elementary and from Lake Forest Park Elementary. So we're excited to do that this Saturday. It'll be at the Target in Woodenville. And we're this year going to partner with Woodenville Police. There's about sixty families that we're going to be uh, connecting up with. There's going to be a fire. Department's going to be there, uh, a very coordinated event, but uh, just wanted to let everybody know because it'll be a while.
Not letting them go yet. When do, does the council get to meet Bella? Is that on the ninth?
Yeah, that is on January ninth.
Anybody met Bella?
Bella's lovely photo.
Joined us at the uh, the staff lunch the other day. It's pretty fun.
Yeah.
She's a cool dog.
Well, I love shop with the cops. So I'm so glad you're doing that. And it sounds like it's bigger and better than usual.
Yeah, and this is, I think, the ninth year that we've done this, somewhere around there. So Rotary's awesome.
Thanks, thanks, chief. Okay, with that, we do have a little more business to conduct, important business. We have a closed session. Uh, collective bargaining uh, per R C W forty-two dot one three O dot one four O, friends for parents B. What are we expecting for timeline? Fifteen minutes? Are we staying here? We're staying here. We'll uh, adjourn to a closed session. We'll be back with notice, any, no decision made to be made after this. Let's go. I'm not on camera, but uh, we're back from our, excuse me, from our closed session. And with that, um, we're adjourned. Good night, everybody.